All right, I call our work session to order. Our first item on the agenda is a budget update. Do we have the budget committee joining us?
Yes, there, yes, there are.
All right. Firewood?
All right, welcome everybody. It's nice to be in person and to see everybody in the virtual space that is still in the virtual space. But I'm personally excited to be here in person to talk about budget. Um, this is our third update. Uh, as we kind of ramp up towards proposal budget in April. And um, we're just gonna go ahead and get started. I can't see my, I don't know, presentation wise.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Okay, oh wait.
What do we got on people there?
There are the budget committee members.
Nate, you were here before us, nice to see y'all.
Hello.
Sorry, I'm missing a few, apologies.
The, but the, online they can see it, so maybe if you start that way, would that help? And then you'll.
Yeah, let's go ahead and dig in, I guess.
Yeah.
Yeah, online individuals can see it.
Yes.
Um.
And then all board members can see it in our packet.
Yeah, we're going over the budget developments.
Yes. We'll go ahead and get started. Uh, just make some use of our time, uh, for the agenda for this presentation tonight. I'm gonna talk a little bit about the budget development process for folks who haven't heard about it before. Uh, I do kind of talk about it every time, so I'll be brief. Um, we have our resource highlight tonight is our part two. All right, we're on slide two. Our special revenue funds, um, we covered the first portion of special revenue funds last um, update. And that was for the student investment account and about the high school success plan and um, those restricted programs. Reminder that special revenue funds are funds that typically come to the district under some type of restrictive agreement. We have to write an application uh, to receive funds. Then we spend the funds and then we get reimbursed by those funds. So that's typically how it works for special revenue. Um, if you could advance the slide. Um, tonight we're gonna talk about the American Rescue Plan Act. So that's our focus is ESER three. Um, and then also our other major federal programs that we have all of the time. Uh, you can get to see how they um, pair with the rest of our budget in terms of, shall. Go ahead and um, advance. So this is our um, budget development process. Um, we worked together with the budget committee and board um, kind of early on. Uh, budget law requires us to propose the budget um, with a local, with a budget committee meeting. Um, and at that time, but in Hillsborough, we really choose to use this as an opportunity to engage the community and get uh, information out there about our resources and how we use them. Uh, we will have our budget committee meeting on April twenty sixth. Um, and at that time, the proposed budget will be available to review. Uh, Superintendent Scott will give his budget message. And then the committee will have some discussion and may approve at that meeting or um, choose to schedule another meeting if there needs to be further conversation. We have the budget hearing and adoption scheduled at a regular board meeting on June twenty first. And then we'll begin to implement that budget on July first. So our resource highlight for special revenue funds. So again, um, they're restricted under grant or other agreements. Um, they're usually on a reimbursement basis, which maybe get a little bit dicey when you get into those really big um, grant agreements. We have allocations for most of them are determined after we've completed our budget cycle. So it's not always normal for us to know exactly how much we're gonna get at the time that we build our budget. Sometimes it varies a little bit, but typically, especially for our regular federal programs, we have our historical funding goals to kind of lean back on. And we're conservative in our planning. So our expenditure assumptions are the same as for the general fund. We consider staffing adjustments, um, the services and supply budgets. We use all of the same assumptions for our special revenue funds as we do for our general fund. We assume there's gonna be a normal, a typical school year, um, in-person instruction all year, including activities. Please advance. So here's the double pie, big pie, little pie, um, picture that should illustrate out of all of our total funds budget. This dark blue on the, on the left-hand side is our total special revenue funds. And this is for the current year, what we have budgeted. And then the smaller pie represents special revenue funds. And the dark blue portions are ESER funds and then our other federal programs that we're gonna talk a little bit more about tonight. You can see the student investment account at thirty point six million dollars. High school success at five point two. Those are the other funds that we already talked about. All right, please advance. So in HSD, we are pretty desiloated in how we do our planning. So a big part of what the instructional leadership team does on a regular basis is they get together and compare for these restricted funds, how can they leverage them against um, what it is that we need to do to increase student achievement and access to learning. So we do a lot to align the requirements of the grant with what the, the needs of our students are. All of these funds come with an extra level of accountability. So they are um, audited at a higher level. Uh, the testing and controls around them are all much more restrictive. Um, and that's just an added layer to the funner that the state of Oregon doesn't necessarily require um, for their general fund spending. There are something that we keep coming back to in HSD is the temporary versus permanent uh, resources and how we spend those. We don't wanna spend temporary resources on a, a permanent service that we always wanna have. Um, so we um, wanna make sure that where our regular federal programs will be sustained over time, the ESER funds are kind of one-time funds and you'll see that in the way that we plan to use them. Please advance. So this may look familiar because we used it in our last presentation. Only we had circled the um, student investment account and high school success. You can see these other components and kind of how they all play together within our strategic plan and our continuous improvement, improvement plan for the district. So the ESSA, E-S-S-A, not ESER, E-S-S-E-R. The ESSA plan is kind of what guys, a lot of our regular federal program spending. Um, and of course, we have other federal programs on top of that. We have our pre-K and our relearning and also our IDEIA, um, which is improvement in instruction for um, students with disabilities, experiencing disabilities. Please advance. So here has been a nice little narrative, um, summary that is right on the Oregon Department of Education website that we goes right to it to kind of talk about ESER funds. Um, these federal program funds have come through us in three different buckets in the current year. And as we move forward, we only have one big bucket remaining, and that's the ESER three fund. And the in total is twenty-four million dollars to be spent over a period of three years. These funds are available to the district for spending through September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four. And so as we initially started the planning for this, even though we only do our budget on a year-by-year basis, super intentional, intentional about how we use these funds for extra support and temporary structures for um, our operations, but that we can continue them for the three-year period and keep things as stable as we can. There is a twenty percent expenditure requirement um, on remediation and that's the federal language, which we really don't like because that um, we prefer to focus on accelerated learning to help our students move forward um, in our systems and even at the state level supports accelerated learning rather than remediation. So that is a federal uh, program requirement that we have to do. Um, put forward the question, what is, what, what doesn't qualify as remediation or uh, recovery, recovered learning? And there's really nothing that we do that falls outside of that. So um, I think that that's a comfort. We have, our Ready School Safe Learner Plan is a requirement of accessing these funds. So right from the gate, um, Travis Ryanman got his plan together and that was a critical piece of, even for us to even be able to access these funds from the get-go. And that plan's available on our website and also the ODE website. Please advance. So we have a pretty great team that has uh, works on the accelerated learning plan. We did it for um, the current year and the next two. And I know that it's kind of small, it's not that small up there, but um, you can see it pretty clearly that in the current year, what we planned to spend with the first round of ESER funding, a lot of districts spent that money when it was just first made available. So that would have been the nineteen twenties school year. We planned deliberately to spend it this year on those things listed. We had, it was much more um, reaction and operational, like this is what we need to operate safely. Um, you can see our ESER two funds. Um, the second round of funding that came through uh, for us was just right over six point three million dollars. And again, spent on things that we knew we would need as we brought students back to school. And then our first kind of dip into the ESER three bucket. We spent, we're planning to spend just over five million dollars this year um, on the items that are listed there as well. All right, please advance. Okay, so this is our plan for twenty-two to twenty-three. So it's the second of the three-year program for the ESER three funds. We have um, here, I'm gonna put it down here. Seven point one million dollars are items that are carried forward from the current year. So these are items that we found were effective this year and we're gonna, we have chosen to continue them forward next year. We also have an additional, um, just over three million dollars in additional uh, items that we wanna add from ESER three. Remind, remembering that ESER one and ESER two have expired. So those, those funds are done. Now all of those federal program items have to come from ESER three funds. All right, please advance. So this is a list of our other, some of our others. It's not a comprehensive list, but this is the biggest of our other major federal programs that we have on an ongoing basis. So we have uh, Title One A, which is typically um, around three and a half million dollars every year. And it's focused on improving education for students in poverty. Um, we fund title uh, coaches and paraprofessionals in our schools with those dollars. Title Two A is just under half a million dollars for improving teacher quality. Um, it funds positions that improve instruction and student engagement. And then are, you can see that our Title One C and Three, our migrant education also extends into some of our programming around staff. And then for IDEIA, uh, it's just, oh, it's two point six million dollars. And it is funding the student services administrative team and some support staff. And those are ongoing. Please advance. And then another major regular fund and I, Nate Rodel, our nutrition services director is here today. I'm sure he's gonna answer questions on the support services report coming up. But this is a, another major program that we run. It's almost an enterprise in the way that it's run in terms of revenues and expenditures. It's one of the few that is, it's almost like a, a business in the way that it's run. So uh, Nate does a really great job planning our, our meals, the labor hours, everything to make sure that the costs are contained within that special revenue fund. Thank you for doing that. So those are some bullet points around the nutrition services um, plan. I don't, or I don't think I need to leave those to you. Um, but I'm happy to answer any question you might have about anything I presented you tonight.
Questions?
I had a question actually about the nutrition uh, services and everything. With that being funded, I know previously before COVID, um, it was like, you know, like based on your income and everything, you would pay for those um, services or build your lunches and breakfasts. Will that resume at any point? Like will that funding stop at any point to where we would have to start charging? I don't know if it's been a discussion yet or not.
Yeah, um, Nate can speak more to that, but as far as I know, as of March eight, our, the extended program waiver, or it's not been extended beyond the current school year.
Okay.
So we would resume charging for meals next school year.
Okay.
You think, you think that, Nate?
No, that was part of the omnibus bill that was supposed to go through at the end of last week and it was not included. So it's pretty much a done. Thank you.
Other questions? All right, well, we're gonna swap agenda items, go to the, skip, we'll get right to you. But these seem to be, like I should have brought this earlier and put them together. Do you have an announcement to make, Michelle?
Oh, thank you. Yes, we do have a vacancy on our budget committee. Recent appointee, uh, Sarah Parsons let us know that she is moving out of the district. And so now we have a, a position vacancy. There's information about that in uh, your packets, situation page and also on our website. There's, the application is out there and is available for people to complete. So if you know someone and would like to participate in the budget committee, please have them reach out to me. I'm happy to answer questions even before they fly.
That's a great way to get involved in the district. These, this committee, the curriculum advisory committee, they're, they're great ways to, to get involved and help out the district, so.
Thank you.
All right. Our next uh, topic then is support services. I think Nate's gonna join us.
Thank you, I think all three of them are.
Oh, everybody.
We're kind of excited about it. Um, let me just, while Nate's making his way to the table there, um, for whoever, however you're gonna arrange that.
Come on, everybody.
Let me just. Let me just give some background information. Each year we have the support services, let me give a, a just a presentation, give some update on the state of affairs in student services and, or in support services. And um, I think if we all look back over the last two years, some of the departments that, well, everybody has been impacted in a huge way. But the departments represented here today with nutrition services, transportation and facilities have worked countless hours to make things continue to go in our district. So uh, we think back to the whole transportation issue and, and the delivery of meals that they did. Uh, they've been impacted in a huge way by staffing, same with nutrition services. They maybe, I don't know, more than anybody, but they've been hit hard by um, staffing issues as well. And they've continued to give meals out to kids, um, even when we run distance learning. And of course, they've been facilities, um, custodial piece and just uh, the staffing issues that have gone there. And still we continue to operate fairly smoothly. So appreciate all of your efforts in this. I know it's been a heck of a two years. I'd say the next couple of years it'll get better. Because I mean, that's our, that's what, that's what the hope is. So anyway, Nate, I think you're kicking us off, is that right?
Uh, I can't, I'm happy to do that, but Dave was first on the list.
Whichever you prefer.
I'll break, I'll break the ice, that's okay. Then I get a lead.
Okay, so who drew the shorts, Dave?
Right, well, uh, as I said, I'm Nate Rodel, I'm the Director of Nutrition Services. Um, and this is kind of just a rehash of last year mostly. Um, so I will say that the pandemic has been, uh, as far as food service goes, probably the most tumultuous uh, period that I, school and nutrition has probably ever seen. Um, I started in school nutrition back in nineteen ninety-eight for Hillsborough. Uh, and uh, it was very different then, but I don't think there'd ever been an interruption we did like we have had the last couple of years. So last school year, we started out um, redistributing staff to one of sixteen sites as uh, we supported uh, meal services that's still on buses. Uh, in the previous year, we had our staff, sixty percent of our staff at one of eight sites. And the other forty percent, uh, if you don't recall, they were able to, to be home out of concern for their health if they have certain health things. And so when we had all staff come back next year, they went to one of sixteen sites. And then uh, once we got to March, when all kids were supposed to be back, we redistributed those staff and equipment, food again, out to all thirty-five sites. Um, so it was kind of a lot of craziness going on. Uh, one issue we didn't deal with last year was the supply chain issues we've been talking about now. Um, as we were serving about sixty percent of our students uh, last year versus the previous year, where it was actually more around forty percent. So and then fast forward to this year and we're serving more than the work pre-pandemic because everything's at low cost. Um, but only through a lot of the uh, amazing efforts of local and federal folks, we got a lot of extra funding, including some ESER funds to repair some things. Um, as well as increased rates last year that really allowed us to, you know, end in a good spot. So I know you guys have the report, I was just gonna go through a bunch of uh, numbers. But in all, I think uh, you have something to be proud of in the staff that we've had, working through this whole time from the beginning, when there was no vaccine, we didn't know what was going on. You know, they were out there in contact with people, same with our drivers, I know Carol talked about that too. Um, and then all of the, the personal issues I think have been, has been new as we have staff dealing with the things that happen in their lives, yet still required to come and do the work that we assign them. So anyways, in a nutshell, uh, Nutrition Services is really proud of um, the work we've been able to do, the support of building administrators and parents and uh, especially the staff who are willing to come and work every day regardless of circumstances outside, so.
Nate, Nate, would you mind just, one of the things that we were fortunate about just because of the, the way that you got ahead of it is just the supply chain issue that so many districts face. Can you just talk a little bit about what was a pretty good place to avoid what a lot of people suffered during that supply chain time?
Um, I don't brag, but I kind of saw it coming at the end of last year, knowing that everything was gonna be free this next year. Uh, so I actually presented at the summer conference last year about supply chain issues coming down the pipe. And so what we did is we started ordering in July to try and get a lot of food on hand so that when everybody else started putting orders in, we had a little bit of a buffer. Um, so we got a cold, a cold tray, a cold refrigerated trailer out of the warehouse just to give us extra room to receive in um, our center plate or our entrees. Uh, and so we did that uh, September through, I think, November. Uh, and then for the amount we were paying fuel, we were able to go ahead and get cold storage out in Forest Grove. So we have eighty pallet positions and a pallet is four by four by eight. Uh, that we're using out of lead cold storage in Forest Grove. Uh, so we had almost seven weeks of inventory uh, coming in, in September, uh, to give us a little bit of a buffer. Uh, we haven't missed a day. Every kid has had an, an option uh, each day. Uh, right now we're down to about two weeks that buffers, we're shipping just under that. So we're, we're continuing to deal with trucks coming half-full, orders not arriving, trucks saying they never sent. That's still, yeah, it's kind of creepy out there.
I guess I'm up. So like uh, Nate said, I mean, it has been one heck of a rodeo this year, as I always put it. Um, facilities, I'm, I'm extremely proud of this, what Facilities has done, what custodial uh, service side has done. Uh, we've got the pleasure to work with Nate to deliver some, some meals throughout the community when we were doing the food uh, supply uh, deliveries. Um, and we've, with, with a, you know, not a full staff of custodian and maintenance staff, we've been able to clean all of our schools to the standards. We've gotten all the filters done. Like Nate saw it coming, I saw the supply thing coming also with the filters. So we've ordered those months in advance. So we always have filters and I've got two Connex boxes at Facilities. So we always have filters to be always up to date and clean. Uh, I know you guys have a lot of these numbers, but some of them that we're proud of are we've, uh, Facilities and the custodians have distributed one million, seven hundred and seventy-seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-five masks. That's a variety of different sized masks, uh, face shields are included in that. Uh, four hundred and forty-six air purifiers, eighty-six electrostatic sprayers, over two hundred PPE station stands. Those are the stands that have the, the hand sanitizer and filters um, in the front. And then we've distributed twenty-five hundred gallons of hand sanitizer and one million, five hundred thousand disinfecting wipes through this whole thing. So we, Ray and I put the numbers together and it's like, it, it really like, wow, that's, I mean, it, it took a lot of time. And then that's all being, still doing work orders and we managed to process six thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five work orders. We still have eight hundred and thirty-nine work orders that we're still processing and doing repairs. But that's been one of the biggest years since I've been in facilities, the amount of workers that we process. And that's all while running, uh, I mean, Facilities usually had like a team of twenty-one because we're still hurting for some positions. Um, some of those positions are HVAC, so we've had to reach out and bring uh, a couple outside contractors on just to keep up on the everyday heat and cooling and if we get any no airflow calls. So we managed to be able to manage the whole district and the repairs that are needed. Um, I'm just, yeah, I'm really proud of who I get to work with and my team that I get to work with and everybody that works for Facilities and, and everybody in this district. So that's what I've got in a nutshell. Um, we're still striving on working and filling positions. Uh, and that's, that's what I got. Any questions?
You've had positions posted all year long.
Yeah.
Yeah, and still do.
Yeah, yeah, we're uh, right now, uh, we've got two unfilled HVAC, one unfilled electrician, six unfilled groundskeepers, and that's, yeah, those are the unfilled positions. So kind of getting nervous going into spring with six unfilled ground positions.
Just as a history lesson, Dave started with the district when he was just out of high school with the summer crew. And he has had a number of different, number of different positions at facilities. And I'm always amazed by the historical knowledge he has of our district and specific buildings, the things that he can tell you about just to, right, yeah, so.
Yeah, it's been, it's been fun. Still, still got some years left though.
Carol Cap, I'm the executive director of Transportation. And, you know, I just want to hear what these guys have said too. You know, I work with an incredible group of people. Um, I know the drivers and the assistants on the buses are kind of out there, but back in the office, I have what I call my core staff, which is uh, mechanics, dispatchers, routers, trainers, managers. And um, I'm very blessed with that group of people. They are really good at problem solving and thinking outside of the box. And uh, there have been some interesting opportunities, as we call them, that have come up. And um, we really were able to pull it together and figure out, you know, how do you take a school bus and deliver for meals? And it probably turned out to be one of the funnest, most rewarding things that we got to do. Drivers and assistants absolutely loved it. Um, they got to make those deep relationships with the students, some of which they are transporting now. Um, and they just really love it. Um, I wanted to share one story with you. I had a driver that came to me yesterday and uh, he said to me, okay, you're not gonna believe this, but I've been having this group of kids with very special needs. And he said, I showed up without my mask and the. And he said, I showed up without my mask, and the kid got on the bus, and he said, Ray, you're old! And he chuckled about that all day long, and it was like, you know, they're wearing the mask for so long to get to see their faces. So this last school year, and school year before, we did, we delivered meals, and as it states in our board report, thank you. We also did a lot of limited in-person. We did, we called it Lippy Slippy Alpha, all the different things to get kids into buildings and new services. The staff was phenomenal, even working through the pandemic. You know, those that were physically able to, and those that weren't concerned about health issues on themselves, but family members they cared for. I mean, they really showed up, and word got out, you know, about delivering meals, and they, they really enjoyed it. It also gave us an opportunity to work on some projects in-house that we filled our times with, especially learning how to sanitize buses. That was an interesting situation. We started out with weed sprayers, and we moved on to the electric shouting sprayers, and those are pretty slick. And we continued to do that every day, and it takes about an hour for one guy to go through about seventy-five buses. So we're getting it down, we got it. Beyond that, then we went into summer. We did more summer transportation than I think we have probably done in a long time. And again, you know, my staff, they pulled it together and figured it out to make it happen, and I just can't say how proud I am of them so much. With the start of this school year, we did go back to a more normal school year. One of the other things that I'm really proud of is that, again, with some creative thinking, even with the worst schedule shortage that I have experienced in nearly thirty-two years in this industry, we are still transporting every single student to school. We were able to look at low ridership areas and condensed routes. So we did trim about sixteen-ish routes down, but we, so we were able to do that, and I think that's something that, again, staff is really proud of. When you look at so many of our neighboring districts are having to, you know, not offer services. So that home-to-school has really been a priority, and we've made that happen. In the midst of all of that, we continue to apply and receive rebate funds and grant funds to purchase buses, including giving a huge opportunity to depart tow in the fountain of electric school buses. So, yeah, I mean, it's, it's been interesting. We have learned a lot. We are putting final touches on a site plan and getting ready to purchase not only buses here in the next couple of months, but also the charging system and construction for that will start this summer in a partnership with P G E, where they pay a good percentage of the infrastructure, which putting it down at our older terminal on Walnut Street was a real blessing again, because if we didn't realize about the whole transformers and all this other stuff. So having them come in as a partner has been a great help, and it's saved us a lot of funds. So with the money we received from the state representative, as well as our partners with P G E, we figured we'll be able to do the infrastructure at the Walnut Street Terminal and purchase two buses. If we play our cards right, maybe three buses, but we're gonna wait till all the pennies are in. As well as we did just learn that D E Q has surplus of funds, and one of my managers who does that, it was first come, first served. And so he called me, he said, I got some email back to him in twelve minutes. So we are probably going to get additional funds from them, we're still waiting to hear back. So that has been a huge accomplishment. So that in a nutshell.
It was easier than I thought.
It really was, it really was. It's been really great.
Carol, as she mentioned, been with the district almost thirty-two years, and I think I'm getting this right, started out as a driver of a van at the Groner School District.
Special needs.
We still have that van toward Facilities. She tried to kill me in it one day. And, and one thing I can tell you about the work that Carol does, she takes so much personal pride in making sure that kids are getting to school every day, and that has been such a challenge as we've had the driver shortage that we've had these last couple of years. Really appreciate all of you three and the work that you've done on behalf of our students. It's just so impressive.
There's, if I can take a moment, I, these are the moments when the words don't, they don't quite convey. I live in an area where I actually saw by accident the bus, and we were looking, I didn't understand what was going on, you know, I'm trying to get away, take away, and go for a walk, and I was amazed. And so then I started coming out all the time, and seeing the people coming, and I knew it was coming, and then the whole, everybody who teaches would come out to assist, and it was just such a feeling of community, and I was impressed. That I live in a district where people who buy buses, people who work facilities, people who can't afford food, would actually do what you are, would want to try to lead the kids who are, I'm gonna say it, stuck at home, trying to, so I'm just saying, thank you. That's not adequate, but that's the best that I can do to come out and say one word. But I understand some of it.
Other questions or comments?
Just a reminder, I think Mark played a big part in the electric school bus issue, so thank you for all of your efforts.
And if Mike hasn't mentioned, I'm looking, I'm looking to be passenger number one at that community.
Driver number one.
We could probably hook you up with a route without problems.
Passenger one sounds a little more reasonable. And I guess what else we're missing, I mentioned, when she represented Solomon, leading the way on that in our packet, but also representing the plane, and at the time Senator Riley were very instrumental in making that happen, that the three legislators responsible for the bulk of Hillsborough School District really pulled their resources together and found a way to make that happen. So thank you to all three of those legislators for putting us at the tip of that electronic bus spear. I'm excited for it. And for the three of you, hopefully we will, now that people are here in space, start tours again, because easily, three of my favorite tours that I've ever been on in my board service were the three facilities that were sitting here. So, yeah, looking forward to that. Until I no longer had access to it somewhat suddenly, the facility's blue fleece was like in the laundry hamper every week. It was a, it was a staple in my wardrobe, so. Yes, thank you guys for everything you do, and appreciate you coming tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, we're ahead of schedule.
What?
How did that happen?
We just, we just come to that charter, a board night on the left.
Yeah. Yeah, I feel like we need to stick to the seven o'clock. Yeah. Yeah. All right, so we'll take your fifteen-minute break and begin again, let's try to be promptly at seven o'clock since we have such time here, and I'll see you all back then, uh, we're in recess. All right, welcome back, everyone. Uh, our regular meeting is now in session. See more members virtually. Uh, we'll begin title our files, Lou, like we did earlier. Those of you who don't know, it's over here. What's the names?
Two, five. And the children of the world stand, one nation under God, in this school, with the
As we gather here today, we would like to take a moment to acknowledge that our district service area is on the occupied traditional homelands of the Iqaladi indigenous people, lands we now call Washington County and the state of Oregon. We honor the indigenous people whose traditional and ancestral homeland to stand on, the Tuatzi Kalakulia, the Kukalame, Quakamis, Tumwater, Malala, bands of the Chinook, and many other indigenous nations of the Pami River. Remembering these communities, we honor their legacy, their lives, and their ancestors. We also recognize the urban indigenous native First Peoples community living in the metro area, which includes over four hundred tribal nations. The Hillsborough School District is committed to the recognition and education regarding tribal and local history, and working with our local tribes in partnership. As we often do, we have proclamations at the beginning of our meetings, and today we have one with Director Ward.
The Hillsborough School District recognizes that family and community involvement is a significant factor in the success of schools. By becoming a volunteer, family and community members are providing an invaluable contribution to the education of our students. The Hillsborough School District appreciates the service of dedicated volunteers to assist professional educators by offering their time, encouragement, and meaningful contact with students. The Hillsborough School District acknowledges that volunteers are called upon to assist teachers and staff with the day-to-day activities involved in providing a balanced education for our students, and are an important part of a team that strives to ensure that each of our students succeeds. The Hillsborough School District thanks volunteers for spending numerous hours serving as chaperones, mentors, after-school tutors, club leaders, booster club members, P T A, P T O, and P A C members, guest speakers, classroom helpers, athletic coaches, and in countless other ways. The Board of Education of the Hillsborough School District do hereby proclaim the week of April eighteenth through the twenty-second of two thousand and twenty-two to be Volunteer Appreciation Week. We urge all community members to join us in recognizing the many contributions and achievements of volunteers to the development and prosperity of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we are at the point of the evening where we should approve our agenda. Would anybody like to make a motion?
I move that the Board of Directors approve the agenda as printed.
Second.
It's been moved, uh, moved by Director Martinez and seconded by Director Ward, that the Board of Directors approve the agenda as printed, which is in discussion. Uh, let's do a roll call vote.
Sheen Kim?
Aye.
Erica Lopez?
Aye.
Vera Martinez?
Aye.
Nancy Thomas?
Aye.
Monique Ward?
Aye.
Mark Watson?
Aye. Motion carries. For those of you who didn't notice just then, Director Allen is no longer with us this evening, she may pop in and out, but we just plan on her not being with us for the rest of the evening. Uh, next up is audience time, we have somebody who would like to speak?
None.
None, all right. And I don't have to read that down. All right. Next up is the consent agenda. Would anybody like to make a motion?
I move that the Board of Directors approve the consent agenda as printed.
Second.
It's been moved by Director Thomas and seconded by Director Ward, that the Board of Directors approve the consent agenda as printed. Is there any discussion? Those who would call the roll.
Sheen Kim?
Aye.
Erica Lopez?
Aye.
Vera Martinez?
Aye.
Nancy Thomas?
Aye.
Monique Ward?
Aye.
Mark Watson?
Aye. Motion carries. All right, moving straight into our action items. I think I see Adam up there.
Yes, sir.
Discussion for contract for Walnut Street Transportation Improvement.
Yes, uh, this is our old transportation center, and we are doing some improvements to that facility, including the installation, installation of some new bus lifts, some H V A C upgrades, we're putting skylights over the work bays in the shop, we're replacing some overhead doors. So I'm happy, once again, to recommend five-star builders for this contract, they were the low bid. I would recommend that we award them the base bid and the bid alternate, which is to replace the window at the dispatch office. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Do you have any questions, Ray?
Okay, I just want to make sure, I think you mentioned this at the last meeting, but the bid alternate is for additional items to be done that we didn't know we had the funds to do prior, is that how that works?
Correct, yeah, we bid that, we bid those bid alternates out separately, hoping that we can afford to do the base bid and the bid alternate, but we, we want to put ourselves in a position of not having to reject all, the entire bid, if we can't afford that alternate. So in this case, we're able to award the bid, the base bid and the alternate.
Thank you.
And, and over the course of our recent discussions, have there been times where we had an alternate bid that we'd been concerned, and when the bids came back, we just couldn't afford it?
Yeah, yeah, we have. Those don't even come to you. If we, if we don't feel that we can recommend the base or the, the bid alternate, we just, we don't bring it forward, we just award the base bid.
Yeah, in those cases, you would just put the base bid forward, right?
Correct.
Okay. And when you say the window, is that, it's not an external window, is that big window between them and the?
Correct.
The building, whatever?
Correct. It's where the drivers come up to get their, their kids before they are dispatched, yes.
Yeah, I know which one.
Yeah.
That's why I'm so busy.
Any other questions? I would just note that the executive director of transportation was just here, and I don't know how she'd feel about you calling it the old transportation center, but.
Uh, she knows.
If there's no further questions, would anybody like to make a motion?
I move that the Directors award the contract for improvements to the Walnut Street Transportation Center to five-star builders for a base bid amount of nine hundred and ninety-five thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars, and a bid alternate of twelve thousand dollars, twelve thousand fifty dollars.
Second.
It's been moved by Director Kim and seconded by Director Lopez, that the Board of Directors award the contract for improvements to the Walnut Street Transportation Center to five-star builders for the base bid amount of nine hundred and ninety-five thousand, seven hundred and eight dollars, and a bid alternate of twelve thousand fifty dollars. Is there any further discussion?
Sheen Kim?
Aye.
Erica Lopez?
Aye.
Vera Martinez?
Aye.
Nancy Thomas?
Aye.
Monique Ward?
Aye.
Mark Watson?
Aye. Motion carries. I believe you're up again, Adam.
Yes, thank you.
Isn't it exciting?
This is very exciting, yes. This is to award the contract for the Liberty High Solar Project. You'll remember, this was to help us meet the green energy technology requirement from the state of Oregon. This is the 1.5% of eligible contracts that were required to spend towards green energy technology. We've chosen to kind of consolidate all of the, those dollars into this single project at the Liberty Sustainable Agriculture Building. And I'm happy, I'm really happy to recommend that we award this project to Ross Builders. This is another local builder that we haven't had a chance to work with in a lot during this bond. So we're excited that they're, they're, they were the low bid, and we know they're gonna do a great job for us. So again, happy to answer any questions about this bid.
Questions for Adam? Can I just add one thing? Sure. The teachers at Liberty are excited about this because at the Sustainable Ag and Sustainable Design Program, they wanted to create a campus that's a model, and this will be a place where students can observe solar energy being created, and it'll be a covered workspace for them to do projects outdoors on the site. So this is a really big deal for them, so.
Yeah, yeah. They've been very involved in the planning of this, this building.
Probably since we, I mean, that's a pretty new building to begin with, right?
Yeah.
It's built with five dollars, right?
Yep, yep. This was just, gave us the, the ability to expand that campus a little bit, and also to add a new sustainable technology that students can learn about.
Any other questions for Adam? Anybody like to make a motion?
I proudly move that the Board of Directors award the contract for the solar canopy at Liberty High School Sustainable Agricultural Program to Ross Builders for the bid amount of one million, three hundred and fifty-two thousand, three hundred and eighty-four dollars.
Second.
It has been proudly moved by Director Thomas and regularly seconded by Director Martinez, that the Board of Directors award the contract for the solar canopy at that the Board of Directors award the contract for the solar canopy at Liberty High School Sustainable Agricultural Program to Ross Builders for the bid amount of one million three hundred fifty-two thousand three hundred eighty-four dollars. Is there any further discussion? Call roll please.
Sheehan Kim?
Aye.
Erica Lopez?
Aye.
Yira Martinez?
Aye.
Nancy Thomas?
Aye.
Monique Ward?
Aye.
Mark Watson?
Aye. Motion carries.
Just note that probably the reason she proudly moved was because Director Thomas has a student at Liberty High School right now.
Oh, great. Well, they'll get to enjoy that new building here next fall.
I think you're done.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks for being with us. Those of you here who don't know, Adam Stewart is our Capital Projects Officer, former CFO, and when the bond work is complete, which we're pretty close to, uh, he will probably be retiring, right, Adam?
That's the plan. Yeah.
We're gonna drag our feet on that last project.
We're actually trying to get that last project really to last. I would bet he's pretty aware of what the legal requirement of the date of that last project is based on what I'm spending, right?
Yeah.
Well, thank you for your years of service to the district, Adam.
Thank you.
All right, next up is the, uh, inter-district transfer plan, and Beth has some questions about that.
Yes, so as we discussed at the last meeting, uh, House Bill twenty-seven forty-seven governs the process for announcing whether or not districts intend to participate in the annual inter-district transfer process, which allows students to transfer between their home district and another district. And, uh, we've been working with principals going over, uh, their current placements, and when we talk about a placement, oftentimes those are students who may have started the school year in a particular school, or their family may have moved over the summer, and they are allowed to continue at either what would have been their school or the school they were at for the remainder of the school year, but then after that point, if they want to stay, they would have to, uh, put in for an inter-district transfer. So, um, taking a look at where those students are for schools and then what the capacity might be for potentially accepting additional students and at what grade levels, um, we go back and forth with principals over the course of several weeks to try to really find uh, finally hone those numbers for them. So what we were able to put into your packet this afternoon is our recommendation, and you'll see that, um, we are recommending that a hundred slots be open for students to potentially come to Hillsborough School District, and, um, that we are willing to release up to fifty students to go to other districts. In the past, those numbers have been a little bit closer together, um, but we do find that typically through this process, we uh, are bringing in more students than are wanting to leave, and also just due to our enrollment status right now, we, uh, feel comfortable opening up additional slots and making that number larger than it's been in the past. And, um, you'll also see, and we have notations in the document that show that even though all these up to numbers at various schools add up to far more than a hundred, we we do that simply to provide cushions and um, to make sure that we're not overloading any particular schools, um, understanding that what we have indicated here adds up to more than the number that we've said that we can take. So, uh, but we have a pretty sophisticated process that we can employ if we do have more requests at a particular school than we have indicated slots for, or overall, if we have more than a hundred requests total, then we have an equitable lottery process that we can engage in for that. Also, just know that, um, by approving this plan, this kind of opens these opportunities for students, and it's, you know, as long as there is no competition in terms of too many applicants or whatnot, or they as long as they've asked for a grade that that indicates capacity, they will get accepted. So it's it's a much easier process to go through the this window, um, although there is a hardship process that exists at any point during the year for students who are facing, you know, a situation that would require them to request a transfer between districts, and we we evaluate those all year long. This is simply the process by which it it's more of an open and easier process for districts to manage, so. The other thing I wanted to mention is in years past, we have, um, not really been able to accommodate requests for kinder transfers because our schools have had a really hard time knowing the capacity at the kindergarten level because, um, a lot of times they don't know those numbers until later in the summer. So we we dipped our toe in the water of in past years, you know, saying, well, up to ten of these spots can be for kinders, but we won't know for sure your placement until August. This year is the first year that we've done this, that, um, schools have felt comfortable allowing those kindergarten requests to come in, which is another way that I think we're making it a little easier on families. Because that, you know, the younger the children are, the harder it can be with take care situations and the like, so.
So Beth, was it, um, is it the pandemic that made the chief, the administrative field feel more comfortable in making that commitment? Because nothing has changed about the enrollment period, neither the flexibility or not not ability of them to get that enrollment. So if nothing has changed, why now come forward before we cannot?
Um, well, I mean, I I would hesitate to get into the mind of the principals, I guess, but, um, I think maybe just more experience with this process. And, you know, now it's in like about its fifth year maybe or sixth year, and so I think maybe they've seen how it's played out and that they they probably can loosen up a little bit and and allow those transfers to happen. I think also understanding, um, you know, the difficulties that it can present to families not knowing where their child is going to be going to school until so late, um, sometimes a week before school starts. So being able to just go ahead and and lock those in a little earlier, I think can make it easier on everybody. And and we'll see how it goes. If it if it if it backfires, it might go back next year, but, um, it's something that we're willing to try this year.
I have a question. What has the numbers been like in the past for this year?
Well, for example, last year, we opened sixty for incoming and released forty, and we were, oddly enough, I don't know what it is, we kind of cosmically get the numbers pretty right. I mean, we're usually pretty right on, um. So, you know, it will remain to be seen how many of these slots are are requested this year.
And then my second question is, um, are there common placements that we see people coming, transferring in from? Or where we are releasing students to, are there any common areas that stand out?
I mean, I I probably what you would expect, it's our closest neighbors. We trade most with like Horst River and Beaverton, uh, less so with the ones that are a bit farther out, um, unless there are situations where maybe the parent is working in a particular district, so even if they may live farther away, it becomes, you know, easier for them to take their child with them, whichever way that is, if they work in a different district or if they work here, so, yeah.
Other questions? So once we accept an inter-district transfer, we would never rescind, so if much of the missing enrollment that we've seen during the pandemic returns, um, we would never tell somebody we've allowed an inter-district transfer. Oh, no, we're too full, oh, you can't come, right? Like, well, if we say you can come, you can come, right?
That's that's accurate, um, unless they move again, um, outside of our district, or, uh, there's just a couple of criteria that they have to meet in terms of, um, behavior and attendance. That has to be applied equally to everyone. It can't just be individually applied to certain students.
Any further questions? Let's make a motion.
I move that the Board of Directors adopt the inter-district transfers plan. Ms. Sayers?
Second.
It's been moved by Director Kim and seconded by Director Thomas that the Board of Directors adopt the inter-district transfers plan. Any further discussion? I would just add that, uh, just to note, former student school board representative, Dylan, Neil came to us through this process, the first be at HOA, and then he represented Liberty High School here at the board level, so, um, it's a pretty good program for us. We call the roll for each of us.
Sheehan Kim?
Aye.
Erica Lopez?
Aye.
Yira Martinez?
Aye.
Nancy Thomas?
Aye.
Monique Ward?
Aye.
Mark Watson?
Aye. Motion carries.
Next up is discussion about the school calendar for the upcoming academic year. Confer more comments, follow up.
Yes, I am very excited tonight because we're going to, uh, we're going to adopt our two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three school calendar, and, um, yes, yay. So, uh, the proposal, just wanted to do a quick review that we're going to be doing our family connections before Labor Day, and then, uh, I was charged going back to look at how we could have two contiguous weeks for winter break. Uh, that will also, uh, move into the second of, uh, January, which is a federal holiday, so, um, those are kind of the key pieces. We had lots of bridge discussion in regards to this, and so, um, I would like to see if there's any questions.
Any other questions for Colin?
Seems like we just started this in October, so.
I feel like all the questions have been asked.
That's true.
All right, would anybody like to make a motion?
I move that the Board of Directors adopt the proposed two thousand twenty-two to two thousand twenty-three calendar.
Second.
It's been moved by Director Ward and seconded by Director Lopez that the Board of Directors adopt the proposed two thousand twenty-two, two thousand twenty-three school calendar. Is there any further discussion? Scene one, call roll please.
Sheehan Kim?
Aye.
Erica Lopez?
Aye.
Yira Martinez?
Aye.
Nancy Thomas?
Aye.
Monique Ward?
Aye.
Mark Watson?
Aye. Motion carries.
All right.
Thank you.
Uh, yes, and thank you for all your hard work within many generations, bringing it forward towards us, yeah. And thank you to our partners, too. I see some of them here for for flexibility and trying to figure out how to get us I think the parents really appreciate this two contiguous weeks. Uh, next up is, oh, I forgot what. I guess I heard. There we go. Hello?
Hi, good evening, everyone. I first want to say thank you so much for allowing us the opportunity last month to share some of our work related to our drug and alcohol prevention and intervention work. And tonight, as part of Policy I G A E B, also thank you, Monique, for catching that typo on that one. Um, in part of that work, we are here to, um, bring forth our annual review and hopefully, uh, pass the the policy and the, uh, work that we are doing moving forward into the rest of our school year.
Questions for Rob? It's been a discussion last month. All right, would anybody like to make a motion?
I move that the Board of Directors adopt the twenty-one, twenty-two drug, alcohol, and tobacco prevention plan.
Second.
It's been moved by Director Thomas and seconded by Director Martinez that the Board of Directors adopt the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two drug, alcohol, and tobacco prevention plan. Is there any further discussion? Call roll please.
Sheehan Kim?
Aye.
Erica Lopez?
Aye.
Yira Martinez?
Aye.
Nancy Thomas?
Aye.
Monique Ward?
Aye.
Mark Watson?
Aye. Motion carries.
All right, next up, Michelle, we have, uh, acknowledgement of a donation.
Yes, Director, we received a donation of eleven thousand dollars from Patterson Booster Club to Patterson Elementary School for library books uh, last month, and we're here to, um, give thanks and acknowledge that support for the school. Uh, just to note that the threshold for donations to come to the Board is five thousand dollars or higher. We, as a district, receive many, many other contributions in support of our students as well, but, um, special thanks to Patterson Booster Club.
Any questions or comments from Michelle? Would anybody like to make a motion?
I move that the Board of Directors acknowledge the donation of eleven thousand dollars from the Patterson Booster Club to Patterson Elementary School for library books.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Director Lopez and seconded by Director Ward that the Board of Directors acknowledge the donation of eleven thousand dollars from the Patterson Booster Club to Patterson Elementary School for library books. Is there any further discussion? Call roll please.
Sheehan Kim?
Aye.
Erica Lopez?
Aye.
Yira Martinez?
Aye.
Nancy Thomas?
Aye.
Monique Ward?
Aye.
Mark Watson?
Aye. Motion carries.
All right. That concludes our action items. Our next agenda item is COVID update. I don't think we have much.
I will say we have optional masking in place right now, as you can probably tell by looking around the room, and I'm happy to report we have nothing to share on COVID for the first time in twenty-four months. Yeah.
All right. That wasn't fifteen minutes.
No, it wasn't.
There you go. Uh, next up is a financial report from Michelle.
Um, thank you. Uh, you guys will know it, but the financial report along with our general fund cash flow report was in your packet, and I am happy to answer any questions you might have. Our worker workers' comp, uh, reports are actually trending below what they were pre-coalced COVID level, so that's positive, and our student incidents are pretty much on track. So, uh, happy to answer any questions.
They're gonna be built.
Yeah.
Any questions for Michelle on the financial report? It's all in your packet. All right. Thank you, Michelle.
Thank you.
From a team member shout-out? Usually have a team member shout-out.
I do. I'm really excited about everything my team is working on right now. Um, one of the exciting things that we do cross-departmentally is we're working with HR and tech services to pilot a new employee portal, which will be secure and, um, hopefully much better access for our staff members. So we're excited about that change.
I can give a shout-out for yourself on that one.
Yeah.
Uh, our next agenda item is first reading of policies. They are in the packet. If you have any questions, please direct them to the appropriate cabinet member. That's the end of the regular items, uh.
Mr. Chairman, President, um, Board Chair Watson, Vice Chair Thomas, fellow board members, superintendent staff, and administrative leaders. I'd like to take a moment of personal privilege to provide you with, uh, my bargaining update. Um, the Hillsborough Education Association recently held our election for its H eight officers for the two thousand twenty-two, twenty-four school year, and tonight we have three of our four officers here in the room. And so I'd like to announce that our next president will be Mary Kay Baugh, over there, and she'll be supported by our vice president-elect Angela Azuma. And, um, we also have in the room tonight our secretary, Ilmair. So I'm very excited to pass the torch on to these, um, members and, um, know that, uh, it will be great leadership, and I myself will be going back into the classroom and, um, I promise to, um, uh, I taught first grade for many, many years, and so, um, my husband said to me, you know, there's some things you don't have to do like we used to, you know, like asking if I'd gone to the bathroom before we've gone on a road trip, so. He's got a list for me, so anyways, um, yeah, so looking forward to that, um, and very excited for for the change for for everyone. Um, so, going on to, um, a little bit about our bargaining. Last week, the HDA and HSE bargaining teams came back together again with every intention of reaching a settlement, and we were confident that both teams wanted the same thing. And we were confident that both teams wanted the same thing. We had high hopes of rolling up our sleeves and spending the time needed to get the work done. The evening did not go as we had anticipated. In fact, the H8 bargaining team, well, I'll just say, um, felt overwhelmed with how far off we seem to be on some of our most significant articles. However, a small group from each side will be meeting for a couple hours this Thursday to try and better understand one another in hopes for that steven-cuddy win-win in the near future. I want you to know that the nine people that make up the H8 bargaining team have spent the past 15 months listening to members to find out what they need and what they want in their next contract. We work together in solidarity and we've had listening sessions, hosted weekly office hours, sent out surveys, answered and sent emails, and as COVID allowed, had one-on-one conversations. The H8 team takes the responsibility of being the voice of 1,200-plus members very seriously. And we work diligently to represent all of the members, whether they are specialists, classroom teachers, mental health professionals, BIPOC, LGBTQ+, white, new probationary teachers, or seasoned veterans. It is not news to you that these past two years have been nothing less than a huge undertaking. And it is widely known that many teachers throughout the country in the profession are looking for alternate careers post-COVID as expectations and levels of support needed for student success have at times become an unmanageable drop. Even the state legislators saw that when they met a few weeks ago last month, they passed legislation aimed directly at the teacher shortage in the form of House Bill 4030, the Educator Workforce Bill. This bill will address several aspects of the educator shortage, including ways to entice and retain teachers. And I want to share this update with you and I encourage you to keep these things in mind. When it comes to what we ask, if it appears to cost too much, we want to work with you to find a balance. If it's logistically impossible, we want to hear what and why. If it's a matter of management rights and something we are asking for that will support teachers without costing money, then please do it. Our members need a positive closure to these past very rough two years. Let's continue to work together in order for all of our H8 members to feel heard, seen, and valued, no matter what or where they teach or how they support students in the Hillsborough school spirit. And I want to say thank you for all the work that we've done together. And I look forward to continuing to collaborate and bargain with the team, knowing that we've always come to an agreement in the past. And I feel confident that we will again as well. Um, you know, I know all of the members want to settle and I know, I believe everybody does. So, um, here's to April 19th, it's my oldest son's birthday. Maybe that's a positive sign, we'll be bargaining again and, uh, maybe we will, um, you know, come up with a, it'll be our last day and we'll be looking forward to that event. So, thank you and have a wonderful spring break.
You. Melody is with us, oh, I see her, yeah. Hannah, thank you.
Hi, um, sorry, my camera's not working today. I'm getting a new computer soon, so bear with me, sorry. Um, so hello and good evening. And my report tonight will be short. Um, so with that, so we only have a few more days until a much-needed spring break. And this means that we only have about 12 more weeks of school this year, I've been told. It has been a very different kind of year with a lot of changes. Hopefully, we can make it to the end of the year with no new major changes. Let's hope, keep fingers crossed. And I would like to talk about once again how the classified staff are feeling these days. I have been talking about this all year and even before that. We just had Classified Appreciation Week and it was one week. And it was nice to hear the words of appreciation from students, fellow classified staff, teachers, and administration. It was also nice to have treats in the staff break rooms and to receive some gifts from fellow staff and students. But to some, unfortunately, it was just words. We have received many phone calls and had many conversations with classified staff. And they just feel that while they are nice, while it was nice, they say it was just words. They need to see some actions to know that change is really here. Um, and that change can come in the bargaining, at the bargaining table. And we are still in bargaining. And after the last financial proposal from the district on February 16th, the classified staff are once again feeling undervalued and unappreciated. The last retention bonus offered triggered several phone calls and emails to the bargaining team. And in fact, there has been about 20 classified employees resign and about nine that have put in their notice of retirement. Now, I don't know why they're resigning or retiring, we don't always hear. But that is quite a few in one month, mid-year. Um, but we do, we do return to the table tomorrow and we are making progress. And hopefully, we will reach an agreement soon, um, almost in time to start it again. Um, because we are one year into a three-year contract. Um, the union has emailed a survey out to the classified employees and we will be sharing the results tomorrow during bargaining. But we are still compiling the numbers and creating the reports. And we will email a copy to all of the school board members once that is finished. And that is my report for tonight, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up will be our students. Uh, I see staff online, I'm gonna start there.
I don't really have anything to add tonight besides, as always, thank you to everybody who presented. Um, thank you to our Hillsborough Classified Union presenters and our Hillsborough Education Association presenters, um, and everyone else who showed up. And I just want to say, I'm really glad that this is the first night in a while that I can remember where Travis has not had to play our epidemiologist. Um, and I'm hopeful that trend continues, uh, as we come out of spring break. So, thank you all and enjoy your evening.
Michelle, do you have anything to share with us tonight?
Yeah, hello. Um, I think coming into this week, I think I know a lot of people, um, had a lot of anxieties, like whether or not, whether they were planning to wear masks or not, like on both sides. People had a lot of anxieties. But I think that most people were pleasantly surprised in a way. Um, I think like, it depends on the specific classes. But I think that for most classes, like, there's a decent balance between like those that are wearing a mask and those that aren't. Um, where both sides generally feel comfortable, I feel like now. I think most people are becoming quickly like used to it, um, and the anxieties behind it are wearing away. Um, I'm glad that the pandemic is moving in a positive, positive direction with the pandemic. Um, I hope you all have a safe winter break and take care.
Michelle? Kaylee?
Um, yeah, I just wanted to say that, um, taller staff just know that we, we really see and we really appreciate you, especially students. Um, because we're struggling, we're stressed right next to you and, and then we're going crazy. We know that you're going crazy because we see it. Um, and I think that this was a good meeting before spring break rounding soon. It's still a little early, it's not 10:00 PM. Um, and I think that's what we really needed. And on a positive note, um, I got into all of my universities that applied to Oregon with really high, with really high scholarships. I got a $28,000 scholarship to Willamette, a full ride to U of O, and a $36,000, um, scholarship to Lewis and Clark. And those are all renewable for four years. Um, and then for Willamette University as well, I get to keep it for six years because I got into their dual program, um, where I will finish my bachelor's in three years and then go to law school for three more.
Oh, wow.
That's all, that's all I have to say.
That's all you got?
Follow that, right?
Good luck.
So when I was your age, I was working at Enchanted Forest. I was the monitor on the chute stand. Congratulations, that is incredibly exciting. And obviously, a ton of hard work I did for that, so congratulations, that's awesome. Uh, we did, as Melody mentioned, we did have the opportunities to celebrate Classified Employee Week the last week. And, um, our classified staff members are so important to the work that we do and literally, we could not do school without them. And what they bring to our district is really just the, really the soul of our district and keep us running smoothly, keep operations up and, up and running. Um, in fact, we, we value them so much that during the pandemic, we made a point to make sure that we were not laying off employees when we were in distance learning, but other districts were doing that. Uh, we actually found ways to repurpose and reassign staff members so that they could retain their benefits and retain their position, um, not only for their benefit, for the benefit of our students, uh, as well. Because we knew when we got through that tough part that we would have them still available and they would still be viable, um, parts of the district. And, and we're just happy to do that. We, we do place great value on the work that they do. And it's one of the reasons that we work to keep them, um, keep them working during the pandemic when other organizations were not able to do that. Uh, we're in the process of going through academic conferences right now. And academic conferences are, um, meetings that we have with the small groups of principals. And we start to identify those patterns of need and where we're going to, uh, place resources for the coming year. And we definitely are developing patterns there. There's, um, work to be done, social, emotional learning for sure, there's big efforts there. Um, we've got to get some training done on some of the, uh, the curriculum that we have. There's a, there's a lot of need there as well. Um, ELD is another area that we, that we have to focus on. So, um, you will see that work reflected in conversations that we have in the next couple of months as we start to, uh, lay out our plans for the coming year. But that's, it's been very, very helpful for us. Um, also have been conducting a lot of school visits. Um, it is, uh, it is, it is the best part of the week to be out at schools and seeing them function and seeing, uh, staff and kids in action. I was over at Bikini today, I ran across a kid that was a spinning image of Yedira. Uh, she was definitely challenging, uh, but, uh, but we got treatment. It was great to run into her. So that's all I have for you today.
Now that happened.
Yeah, actually, it was just in the lunchroom, it was random.
All right, uh, board member time, what do we, so Sheehan?
Alrighty, well first, Kaylee, congratulations, that's so exciting. I'm excited to see, so I'm thinking about that, David, where are you deciding to go? And it's very exciting. I also wanted to take this time, I can't see, Jill is still here. Jill, thank you so much for all the work that you've done on representing H8, it just adds meaning to our impact. It's been a pleasure to work with you. I know you were, um, leading H8 since even before my time on the board. So it's been wonderful working with you. Congratulations to the new officers and we look forward to continuing to work with you all. Um, aside from that, let me see, uh, I was able to attend one of the high school student listening sessions and, uh, really enjoyed just the, the fresh energy, um, of 30-something students. Um, and just their candidness and the conversations that were had. And so I, I look forward to being able to go back into the schools, um, yeah, this, this time around. And I think that is, that is all for tonight.
Monique, anything to say here tonight?
I just want to say once again to all the staff, um, thank you for the presentations and all the information, for answering the emails that, uh, I've been arguing with at times. Uh, I hope everyone has a wonderful, uh, spring break. Like to echo, uh, Sheehan's comment about Kaylee, congratulations, that's fantastic work. Wish you all the best for the future. Thank you.
All right. Nancy, anything you want to share?
Actually, there's a couple things, um. It, when Kaylee showed up, I thought, oh no, I missed her, the senior night.
Oh, it's okay.
And I, I got home that night way too late. And by the time I got to my chair, I'm like, I missed the senior night. And you've been in the back of my mind. And at one point, I did say, whatever it is that she needs, God, I'm, I'm gonna kind of work that out for her. But I had no idea what that meant and that was okay, that's the way it is. So, um, and so tonight, to hear you say that, I was just like, yes. And so we are so, so proud of you sweetheart. And what we want you to do is just stay in the moment, just a little while. Um, you will never have this time again. You will never be a senior again, you're never gonna be around a friend again. And the thought and the drive is, ooh, going to college and, just stay in this moment for just a little while longer. Be there, beautiful little girl. Hug your parents and just love what you, a little while longer. And then there's gonna come a time when you can say, see you bye, uh, put the money in my account and, uh, peace out, I'll do that. So I wish you well and I say the same thing to all of our other, um, students as well. I had the privilege of, I finally made it, first time ever at Blinco High School. I was ecstatic. I went by myself, scared to death, don't ask me why I was scared, it was just like, I think I was overrun by the side of the school. Um, I tend to get like that even when I go to Liberty, where my son is. So, um, but I went to see Xander Do and I, I was just in tears laughing at kids that couldn't roller skate, that were trying to roller skate. And it was really awesome. And Seth, thank you so much, if you're still in line. Uh, Seth was out front and I got there a little bit late and she was able to take the money. And I was just like, here, take this and whatever's left, you just take it to the, to the drama department. So that was really good to see. Uh, Mark and I had tried to do it last fall and didn't get a chance to do it. So I decided I was gonna do it, I'm very excited. So I just wanted to say that I'm really impressed. I was impressed by the size of that theater. It was just a high school theater, it was huge. And it was just amazing and I was just really thankful, uh, once again, and reminded why my family and I chose to live in Hillsborough. I was reminded why that, um, whether I feel comfortable or not, I am still welling and a part of this community. So, um, I really felt good about that and I just wanted to share that with you guys, that I got a chance to see the play and, um, the only other thing I have to say is, um, there, there is a lot going on in the world right now and our young people are struggling. Um, and they need our help. Uh, we may not always agree with all of the decisions that they made. In fact, I can think of a number of decisions that I made at this age and stage in my life that my parents made, maybe you're not, have agreed with. But they're still children, they're still kids. They, and it's kind of incumbent upon us to guide them to the best life. And then they're gonna come out and they're gonna make some decisions and quite frankly, I hope they save us. Because right now, we're not looking too good in the current generation. So I thank all of our, our, our young people who are on the board and I just really appreciate the effort that goes forth on every job and I mean that. So, so you know, when I saw your brogones in the store, I just thought, I can't wait to shoot these at school. And it was nice to know that I was working on the half of it, the little one that I knew that was one day gonna save us. So thank you, that's all I have.
Erica, do you have anything you'd like to share?
Just want to wish everyone a well-deserved spring break. I know everybody is in need of a little break. So, um, I hope that you get to enjoy time with your children and your family. Um, and thank you to all the staff that presented and also share their thoughts. And that, I just wanted to also reiterate that we value a lot of the work that is being done and all the work that was done during our time in Lippi and how flexible, um, staff was. So I just wanted to extend my appreciation for that work.
Thank you. Yedira, anything to share tonight?
Yes, I do. Can you guys hear me well? I'm wearing a different set of headphones, I don't know if.
Yeah, it's not great.
Okay, um, so I, I do have kind of a big announcement. So, um, after much thought and deliberation, I've made the decision to resign from the board of directors. Um, I'm not sure how many of you are aware, I'm currently training to be a dental therapist. And so between school, work, my other professional obligations, and my family, I've, have found it very difficult to manage all of the stuff that I'm doing. Sorry, I'm getting choked up a little. So, because I know this position is very important and it just needs somebody that could really dedicate the time to it, I feel it for the best. Um, I will work with, I'm sorry, I don't know, I'm getting all choked up. I will work with Mike to kind of facilitate a plan that will kind of make this go smoothly for the district. Um, and honestly, it was an honor serving on this board and working with all of you. You'll still see me around, I have a second grader, so, um, I'll be here for years to come. And have a happy spring break, everyone.
Thank you. Uh, all of that, um, it's been an honor to serve with you, Yedira. Yeah, I could miss you too, part of that. Um, so I guess we should put on our next board. Um, so I guess we should put on our next board meeting or sometime soon the discussion of the process of how we appoint the replacement and what, when Director Martina Tina's last meeting would be.
Yeah, we will.
And for, for once, this has happened a couple of times over the past, you know, decade, eight years, so. Uh, Monty was originally appointed, uh, Yedira was appointed to replace Wayne, so, so we, we have the, the details of the. So I expect us to be discussing this over the course of the next few board meetings or whatever, but we have the process that we use um, to replace Director Cliff, and um, it felt like it was pretty effective.
Yeah, I think we can bring back a process for your consideration at the next meeting.
Yeah.
And we'll, Mark and I and Rose will get together to put a draft together, and how do you react to that?
Put a timeline. Um, my guess is we would announce the, that probably on the best department to announce it pretty soon. Take applications online, rattle the applications down to a few to come in for an person visit. My reflection, that's how we did it with Wayne's pop, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, something along those lines. Uh, and of course, we'll discuss it, uh, kind of every step we go. Um, something I wanted to just note, uh, in the, nothing is, it was how you planned during COVID, so uh, I think the last time the city of Hillsborough had a local operating levy on the ballot, um, the district took a position on endorsement. Uh, that, and I guess it'll happen, but in order to be in the board pamphlet, it would happen, it would, it would be sometime too soon. Um, so if, if you personally feel like uh, the, the levy is something you can support, I know that they would appreciate uh, forms of endorsement, the official endorsement forms. If you would like, I'm, I'm planning to fill one out. Um, so if you're interested in expressing your support in a way that might be in the board pamphlet or just on their website or whatever, uh, let me know, and I can make sure you get the form and uh, tell you who to return it to. So, um, hopefully, well, hopefully, use my name or not, but you'll always see me there. You only get so, so many number of words. I don't know if I made that cut. Um, but I intend to turn in the form, so they should see me on the website. Um, I just want to say again, thanks to the administrative team, I think uh, our plan to sort of view all of this as an operational decision that you consult with the board about uh, proved pretty wise once again. So I mean, the original um, mask option deadline was April first, then it was March something, then it was, so um, I appreciate once again how nimble our staff has been in um, how I say it in a non-directory way, in the frequently changing guidance at the state level. I feel like our initial job is adapting to those uh, guidelines and implementing the safest options for our students and staff. So uh, again, thank you to all you guys for your flexibility and hopefully we'll get through uh, without any more surges and get to the end of the year safely. And I hope everybody has a great spring break, and oh, and thank you to Rose for coming back for one day to uh, so she was out with three days? Four days, all right. Rose is in between vacations here, so. If you don't hear from her, be, be email her in a minute. You know, don't expect to hear back. I'll be in line, but don't expect. All right, so hope everybody has a great spring break. We are adjourned.